And we were pleased to receive strong support during our joint board meeting at the at the end of last month. So just a little bit about building on momentum. The Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, along with the high school administration, the department chairs, and the Region Nine Board of Education, you've made tremendous progress in the development of curriculum, which includes a writing process, again, the revision of the five-year plan, the revision of a new curriculum template, training, and including a vetting process to ensure vertical and horizontal alignment in curriculum. There are new courses such as human biology for second semester, data science, which is a new math elective. These were all recommended and approved by the Region Nine Board of Education. Curriculum revision includes two wellness courses that were also approved, along with a list of courses that would meet the financial literacy credit that must satisfy our state and local graduation requirements. Additionally, the team has made recommendations for three textbooks for AP Statistics, AP Physics, and AP Psychology, and have worked to create a textbook adoption cycle that aligns with this new curriculum writing process. Collaboratively, the team has also created a curriculum instructional framework for the STEM Academy that we'll talk a little bit more about tonight. And we're pleased that the Finance and Operations Committee also discussed an RFP at the meeting prior to this one that will be brought to the full board for consideration on February 25th. We also heard from Kathy Hillsner, our Director of School Counseling, on the department's development of a four-year planner for scheduling, which paves the way for a more personalized collaborative approach with students and parents. The high school also participated in their collaborative conference visit for NIASC. And Alicia, Maria, and the high school team will use the recommendations in the collaborative conference report to identify priority areas from the self-study and implement those findings in our school improvement efforts. A diagnostic screener called iReady will be incorporated into our budget. You'll see a request for that. And in the future, we'll continue to focus our efforts on supporting curriculum writing for the required courses for graduation in each academic area. We'll continue to support quality teaching and learning through ongoing professional development and commit to integrating our portrait of a graduate into our curriculum documents so that all students have experienced ties to critical thinking, reflection, communication, creativity, and engagement. And of course, we'll also focus on STEM, which is going to be an important area for us, and we'll be designing professional learning practices in those areas. So talking of STEM, expanding our emphasis in this curriculum domain is another key component of our strategic plan. And we believe, and I know you do as well, that these investments are vital to preparing students for success both in higher education and in the rapidly evolving workforce. Research consistently highlights the growing demand for STEM-related skills across a wide range of industries, with projections indicating that STEM occupations will grow at nearly twice the rate of non-STEM careers over the next decade. By expanding course offerings and improving STEM facilities, we are providing students with high-quality, hands-on learning experiences that will cultivate the very skills that we've defined in our Portrait of a Graduate. This commitment to enhancing STEM curriculum and infrastructure reflects both a response to student interest and an alignment to state and national priorities. So we'll talk more about the curriculum upgrades in just a moment, but we'll also talk about how we're updating our facilities in alignment with these changes. So we see this as a two-step process, and in the first step, we're going to be looking at innovating and looking at facilities improvement for our STEM space. If you recall, last year, we budgeted $160,000 in the facilities cost center to support our vision in this area. The money was set aside immediately to approve H101. The remaining funds were earmarked towards a facility and design study. We have approximately $70,000 left for that purpose. As noted, we presented an RFP for study this evening to the Finance and Operations Committee. Key aspects of this RFP will include stakeholder feedback sessions, developing educational specifications, developing conceptual drawings, and providing cost estimates for design and instruction. The firm will also facilitate meetings with a study group and the Region Nine Building Committee to hear feedback and to refine their conceptual designs in alignment with our district goals and budget considerations. And so you didn't see this diagram as part of the RFP in your earlier meeting, but this is the process that we envision, where the RFP architectural firm will be getting input from perhaps the curriculum committee and a study group. That input will start to develop a vision for the STEM space and the program. The next step would be to get some admin input. You can see the next step in that blue square after that would be some type of preliminary conceptual design, and that preliminary conceptual design is based on the synthesis of the input from the study group and the curriculum committee. And it's important at this phase that those conceptual designs are then brought back to the study group for further input before we start to get a final product, which is that conceptual design process and the revisions that are made. And then that's when that process can be brought to the Region Nine Board, where you have a chance to take a look at the conceptual design again before moving to final steps. So perhaps this diagram is helpful to the committee and to the board in thinking about how this RFP could really benefit us in designing a vision and a conceptual design for this space. The second step is outlined on this slide, and that includes integrating online coursework into our STEM Academy in Joe Barlow. And so this chart contains a list of new courses that the team is taking into consideration. And as the team identifies at least two courses per area, computer science, engineering and business, and technology, to add to the STEM Academy, that will also take into consideration the multiple partnerships and opportunities we've embedded into our graduation policy. And those partnerships include, or those policies include certifications and credentials that would look at things like cybersecurity from Google, inbound marketing from HubSpot, data science and professional certificate from IBM, dual enrollment opportunities, or ECE through Sacred Heart, Southern, and Yukon, and ISOLDI, which is opportunities for students to participate in independent studies, online learning, and dual enrollment. So finally, the team, when considering and working and looking at these potential courses, will also work with advance to create projects connected to our vision of a graduate, to look at how courses can be more hands-on and performance-based, how they can be grounded in local context, aligned with the curriculum, and involve students in being more reflective learners, expressive communicators, creative thinkers, all the attributes that are defined in our Portrait of a Graduate. So that's section one of the presentation. Section two is where we can talk a little bit about the main budget drivers in the 2526 budget. Our budget is divided into eight cost centers. These cost centers include Joe Barlow High School with the school itself, central office, curriculum and instruction, district-wide facilities, special education, and technology. If the total cost of the 2526 budget is increasing by approximately $1.3 million next year, special education accounts for almost 45% of this increase at $639,000. The other seven cost centers combined account for the remaining 50% of the increase at approximately $720,000. In this slide, you can see that special education is increasing by approximately 12%. If the increase was the same as the increase in Reading, which was approximately 5%, it would be more in line with the other cost centers. So I want you to remember that point, and I'm going to come back to it later in the This slide highlights the budget drivers in the 2526 budget. And again, special education transportation is increasing by $413,000 next year. Tuition and outplacements declined by approximately $85,000 last year, or actually this year. But next year, this area is a driver, increasing by approximately $387,000. We received more excess cost reimbursement in this year's budget, but unfortunately, we're seeing less reimbursement from the state next year, and that's an impact to our budget of approximately $100,000. District-wide transportation is increasing by approximately $213,000. We'll discuss that in more detail during the District-Wide Cost Center. Medical insurance is projected to increase by approximately 5% based on Brown &amp; Brown's projection, and we're going to schedule a meeting with Brown &amp; Brown so you can hear their claims analysis for this year and next year at an upcoming meeting. We do not include health insurance on this particular slide because we're essentially flat-funding health insurance based on the health of our reserve and how the Region Nine Board has really managed this area well in past years. But nevertheless, health insurance alone accounts for approximately $2.2 million in our budget. That's a little over 8% of the total budget, which is larger than some of our cost centers. Finally, our debt service is relatively flat this year. You can see this slide, which shows the change in our debt service over the last five years. And in previous years, the rapid decline of our debt service has actually helped control our budget increases. Our debt service is ticking down by approximately $50,000 next year, but not at the pace it was in previous years. And obviously, the bond interest payments include the new Nest project this year. We'll talk about this perhaps in upcoming budget discussions. We wanted to take a moment to talk a little bit more about special education in particular. And we wanted to highlight how tuition, outplacement, and transportation works. And so this slide discusses the different types and costs of placements for which the district funds tuition and outplacements. You can see the number of students we have in each of these programs, the average tuition and transportation costs of the schools where these students attend, and you can see the number of students in the second column. Therapeutic day programs generally fall in two categories: applied behavior analysis programs and programs for students with significant emotional, behavioral, and mental health needs. These placements provide an intensive level of support that we cannot provide at Joe Barlow. Students in a placement with an applied behavior analysis focus often require one-to-one staffing, and therefore, the tuition for these programs tend to be higher than the behavior analysis programs. There are also circumstances where students require such intensive support in order to access their education that they require a residential placement. And so we do have students that require residential placements. The fourth category of outplacement is for students who have finished their graduation requirements but continue to require special education services. And in Connecticut, a student may be eligible for special education services through the school year in which they turn 22 years of age. We can talk more about our research in that area in upcoming presentations. So moving on to section three, this section, we discuss enrollment, grants, and staff changes. We talked a little bit about enrollment at a previous meeting. We basically said that enrollment is an important budgeting tool. At one time in 1993, enrollment at Joe Barlow was as low as 602 students, and in 2013, it was as high as 1,068 students. According to Prouder, enrollment has dipped during the last two to three years, but this decline will not move past 2026 before strongly increasing to 870 students by 2033. Currently, we have 698 students. The apportionment is based on 691 students, which includes 366 students from Eastern and 325 students from Reading. As noted earlier, enrollment at Joe Barlow will rebound over the next two years, and this trend is supported by our strong pipeline, K-8 for Eastern and Reading. Our current grade-eight class at John Reed Middle School is 101 students. The current grade-eight class at Helen Keller is 90 students. And according to Prouder, next year, grade nine is expected to have 191 students. This slide shows how we've offset operational spending using grant funding. It shows where we allocate the grant and in which cost center. You can see the Title I change dipped slightly from $30,755 to $25,640, and that we use those monies to support the academic support paraeducator in the JBHS Cost Center. Title II, just a slight change from $10,000 to $9,000, and we're using those monies to support professional development for administrators and leaders. Title III is for our MLLO population, that's $513 for supplies. And finally, Title IV has remained consistent over the last three years at $10,000, and we're using those funds to offset restorative practices, which we talked about during our joint board meeting. Last year, we reduced approximately two certified teachers and three non-certified positions at the high school. This slide shows staff changes in the 2526 budget at this point in the process. Overall, we have reduced three certified staff positions, saving a total of $257,903. In addition, we've reduced one paraeducator in the amount of $23,871. We are still early in the process, and therefore, we may have further staff changes that we can discuss in future budget workshops. In this section of the presentation, we'll talk about the cost centers themselves. Our first cost center is athletics. This cost center is comprised of staff, which includes administration, coaches, athletic trainers and secretaries, and instruction and operations, which includes dues, fees, equipment, rental fees, insurance, and transportation. The total cost center is $1,121,838, which represents 4.1% of the overall Region Nine budget and is increasing by 4.4%. The coaches' trainers line is increasing by 6.8%, mainly due to contractual increases for our coaches. Mr. Santangeli did request two assistant varsity coaches for our boys' and girls' volleyball program in the amount of $8,790. These programs have earned numerous SWC and state titles over the last three years, and our student interest in these programs have grown tremendously. However, this request is not currently in the budget at this time, but I just wanted to draw your attention to it because maybe that's something that we discuss throughout the process. Dues, fees, and professional services are increasing by 6.7% or $5,825. You will see a request in this area for professional development for our coaches from Positive Coaching Alliance. And Positive Coaching Alliance provides research-based training and resources for coaches, parents, athletes, and leaders to ensure a positive youth development experience for all students. I'll show you a video about that in just a moment. Our supply lines are going up 2.7%. Costs have increased for some uniforms and various replacements. This line also covers awards for our various teams, and when you win a lot, like we do, this line is going to go up. Athletic equipment is going down mostly because we will be using less porta-potties next year because of the Nest project. Athlete insurance is increasing by 8%, and transportation is relatively flat. As a side note here, we're incredibly grateful to our Booster Club, who bring in over $300,000 each year to support our programs. Transportation would be approximately $42,000 higher if not for their support of the ski team, the hockey team, and the swim team transportation. And $12,400 has been moved from this cost center to technology. This is the game and practice video software to support student athletes that I think is, an example is Huddle.
When you ask kids why they drop out of sports, it boils down to one word: fun. Now, fun can mean a lot of different things, but if kids aren't playing, if they're sitting on the bench, and if their parents are putting a lot of pressure on them, they tend to drop out. When my son first started playing sports, I just couldn't believe how much negativity there was. 70% of the kids who start out playing sports drop out by the time they're 12 years old. Kids drop out of sports in droves because of a nasty, snarly coaching style. It really comes from a win-at-all-cost mentality. Coaches are so obsessed with winning, they overlook the opportunity to develop better athletes and better people. When you have a coach who fills a kid's emotional tank, notices the good things they're doing and recognizes them for that, then you have kids who can't wait to come to practice. They can't wait to work hard. They can't wait to have a challenging game where they can show what they learned. Positive Coaching Alliance is a nonprofit with the mission to create a movement to use high school and youth sports to develop better athletes, better people. There's a lot known about how to get the best out of kids, from sports psychology research and the practice of the best coaches. What Positive Coaching Alliance does is we refine those tools to change the culture of youth sports so that every kid can have a positive character-building experience with sports. PCA's concept of youth sports as a development zone means different roles for coaches, athletes, and parents. Coaches are double-goal coaches, first goal is winning, second, more important goal, using sports to teach life lessons. Athletes are triple-impact competitors. They make themselves better, their teammates better, and the game better by the way they compete. And parents are second-goal parents. They leave the first goal, the scoreboard goal, to the coaches and the kids, and they focus on the life lessons goal. We do live workshops. We did 1,500 workshops last year across the country. We do online workshops. We had 50,000 coaches go through our online workshops. Last year, for the first time, we reached more than a million kids through our workshops. And there are 40 million kids in any given year playing high school and youth sports. It's an incredible opportunity to build better athletes, better people, and produce ethical leaders and the positive contributors our society so desperately needs.
So we have, again, I think I said that we have 70% of our students participating in athletics. We have over 30 different programs. We have incredible coaches, and we just think this is money well spent to get even better in this area. Our next cost center is Joe Barlow High School. This cost center is comprised of certified staff, which includes administration, classroom teachers, instructional support specialists and counselors, non-certified staff, which includes paraprofessionals, custodians, and secretaries, and finally, instruction and operations, which includes supplies, equipment, dues, and fees, and so on. The total cost center is $10,863,416. It represents 40% of the overall Region Nine budget and is increasing by 2.5%. We created, or Sarah created, a new grants and offset line in the budget that appears in this cost center. Overall, JBHS will receive slightly less revenue from activity stipends and participation fees in athletics, based on our actual data this year. That's a change of $6,000. Our Title I grant is approximately $5,000 less than last year. And finally, Title II and Title IV grants have been moved to the Curriculum and Instruction Cost Center. The Certified Administrator Line is increasing by approximately 12% or $66,500. As noted earlier, the Directive Curriculum position is located in this cost center, and it represents a $50,000 share to Region Nine, Eastern, and Reading. The Certified Teacher and School Counselor Line is increasing just about 1%, which reflects a cut of approximately $167,000 or 2FTE. I mentioned that before in the staff changes slide. Certified Other Payments are decreasing by 0.5%. Instructional Paraeducators are decreasing by 2.7%, which reflects breakage savings in this area. Non-certified Other Payments are increasing by $20,000 approximately, which reflects a contractual obligation payout for a retiring staff member at the end of the year in the amount of approximately $18,000. This is something that we could perhaps look at paying out of end of year rather than being in next year's budget, so we'll put that in the sandbox perhaps later on. The increase in the custodial line reflects breakage to the high side. Curriculum work is decreasing by approximately $22,000. The NIASC work requested is not in next year's budget because we just held the collaborative conference, and some curriculum work has been moved to Alicia's budget. Instructional texts are increasing by $4,600, which reflects regular textbook replacements. The standardized testing line is increasing because we are adding $5,900 for the iReady assessment for math and reading, and COGAT assessments for gifted and talented students. Our next cost center is district-wide. This center includes medical insurance, food services, transportation, tuition, substitutes, utilities, and legal audit services. The total cost center is $6,367,878. It represents 23.8% of the overall Region Nine budget and is increasing by 4.1% budget to budget, or approximately $254,000. As I mentioned before, health insurance is budgeted at a 0% increase. We'll come back and study that in greater detail in an upcoming workshop. The district-wide bond line, you'll see a reduction of approximately $46,000. This reduction reflects the schedule for long-term interest and principal payments, and payments include our Nest and Fields Enhancement Project. The sub-line is increased by approximately $5,600 based on the actual forecast this year. Last year, transportation was decreasing by 3%, and this change reflects moving special education transportation to the Special Education Cost Center. However, we've moved it back this year, and so you'll see an increase of $149,000 back to district-wide. We are also using smaller vehicles to transport RCA and agri-science students. Therefore, we've added $6,000 to this account for the unleaded fuel costs for these smaller vehicles. The overall transportation contract will be increasing by approximately 7% based on extending our contract with First Student. Of further note, diesel fuel is decreasing from $2.71 a gallon to $2.59 a gallon, thanks to Sarah and Mike for finding some savings there. In a positive note, it seems like more students are staying at Barlow, and so you'll see less students attending the RCA program next year, which means a decrease to magnet school tuition of approximately $12,375. Overall, utility costs are increasing by $44,000, and heating oil is decreasing from $2.73 a gallon to $2.59 a gallon. Finally, we moved the cost of CES and tri-state management to the district-wide cost center to be consistent to where we place that expenditure in the Eastern and Reading budgets. And so that explains the increase of $4,700 in that area. Our third cost center is special education. This cost center is comprised of certified staff, which includes our certified teachers, administration, speech and language pathologists, psychologists, and social workers, and non-certified staff, which include our BCBAs, our nurse, our occupational therapists, behavioral techs and secretaries, and finally, instruction and operations, which includes supplies and equipment, but also includes tuition, transportation, and outplacements. Special education costs can fluctuate significantly from year to year as individual students' needs are determined on an individual basis. as individual students' needs are determined on an individual basis. And just a point to clarify this area, this year's budget, meaning when we budgeted for special education last year, it was going up in total less than 1%, which was $99,000. But this year, the Special Education Cost Center is $5,919,690, which represents 22% of the overall Region 9 budget and is increasing by 12%, Students' needs are, again, determined on an individual basis. The Special Education Identification Rate continues to climb statewide. It went up to 16% in our K-8 schools, Eastern and Reading. And as students' needs become more and more complex, we're going to see increases and decreases in these areas that reflect the needs of our Region 9 students. For next year, we'll be able to reduce one special education teacher based on student enrollment. Certified Other Payments Line is also decreasing as a result of decreasing how much money we're going to be needing in homebound instruction and summer work. We'll also be able to reduce one teaching assistant or paraeducator. The recommended increase in professional development lines takes into consideration next year's student population. In order to receive IEP services, we're going to train one of our special education teachers in Orton-Gillingham, which is a literacy-based reading program. The Outside Evaluation and Services Line is increasing by $17,218, which is the result of moving $30,000 in PPS, legal service costs, into the PPS Cost Center. Otherwise, this line is actually a reduction because school refusal and homebound is actually decreasing. However, even though school refusal and homebound students decreasing in that line, we're seeing increased student needs reflected in the tuition and transportation line. So as you know, homebound instruction is the most restrictive setting that a student can experience. And as our homebound students, or students receiving homebound instruction, responded to the types of intensive interventions we provided this year, it's one of our reasons why our special education budget is a little bit over this year. And as we move those students to least restrictive environments, these students are requiring outplacements. And some include residential placements, which include those day placements and therapeutic outplacements that I mentioned previously just a few slides ago. So we have included $125,000 in tuition and $50,000 in transportation to reflect a not-yet-finalized outplacement. But overall, that explains the change from homebound instruction going down, but tuition and outplacements going up to meet the shifting needs of those particular students. The next cost center is Facilities. This cost center is comprised of building and maintenance contracts, cleaning and repair, and supplies. The total cost center is $979,681. It represents 3.6% of the overall Region 9 budget and is actually a decrease by 0.4%. Maintenance contracts are increasing by approximately $65,000 due to expanded upkeep for our existing and new rooftop units. Previously, maintenance focused on the units over the lower gym and cafeteria. But with the addition of the new unit over the fitness center and the upper gym, the scope has grown in this particular area, and these units require maintenance, which includes filters, belts, and preventative maintenance to ensure operational efficiency. Additionally, we've implemented a new water filtration and treatment system to address the excessively hard and acidic water that we have in Region 9, which, if you recall, actually posed a risk to our chillers. And so the new system is designed to protect this critical equipment, but it also requires ongoing testing and servicing for the next five years. That's actually required when you put in a new system, and so that contributes to increased maintenance costs. Cleaning and repair has a decrease of $100,000. Last year, this area included $160,000 for our STEM classroom renovation that we talked about earlier. This area includes a $20,000 request for the replacement of classroom blinds and $14,000 to address air filter and duck cleaning. As a result of our indoor air quality legislation, professional services have increased by approximately $19,000, and were now required through a state mandated program to conduct five-year inspections. And so that's one of the reasons why that area has increased. Finally, our supply costs have increased by $15,228, with a notable $4,000 allocated, again, for drive belts and motors and such. Our next cost center is Technology. This cost center comprises salaries for our shared network administrators and our tech assistants, the management of our software and services, instructional software and hardware. The total cost center is $624,675. It represents 2.3% of the overall Region 9 budget and is increasing by approximately 10% next year. Instructional software includes all of the digital tools and subscriptions that students utilize in their courses. These tools include things like WeVideo, EdPuzzle, Canva, Turnitin, et cetera. This area is increasing by approximately $22,000. Management software refers to software applications utilized for our student and faculty systems. These include PowerSchool, which is our student information system, AppleTrack, which is our faculty and staff information system, and various software to support our athletic programs. Overall, this increases approximately $19,000 and includes PowerSchool attendance modules and even cybersecurity. The next cost center is Curriculum and Instruction. And this cost center is typically comprised of curriculum work, professional services, and professional techs. And we've said before that this cost center is the engine that kind of drives student growth and student achievement. The total cost center is $106,482. It represents less than 0.5% of the overall Region 9 budget and is increasing by $65,487 next year. At the top of this cost center, you'll see grant reductions from Title II and Title IV in the amount of $19,626. These grants support district initiatives in the area of teacher evaluation, feedback, and training, restorative practices that I mentioned earlier. There's an increase of $63,698 for curriculum and summer work. This work comprises of the following areas: $23,000 for social studies. That includes revisions to US History, Economics, East Asian Cultures Debate, Cultural Anthropology, Issues in World Geography, AP Gov., and Politics; $14,000 for K-12 Wellness, Health and Wellness, which includes revisions to Health and Wellness Courses I, II, and III, and Wellness Foundations; $8,232 for our school counseling curriculum; $23,760 for math. That includes revision to Algebra, Geometry, Advanced Algebra I, Advanced Geometry I, and Advanced Precalc. There's also money in this area for curriculum vetting, which is a process where teachers ensure alignment with standards, vertical and horizontal alignment, and ensuring that our goals and essential questions are aligning with student outcomes. We're increasing professional services by approximately $21,000. This area will include $5,000 for restorative practices, once again, offset by the grant; $9,750 for a Great School Partnership to support curriculum writing in the area of social studies; funds allocated to the leadership team in the area of executive coaching, which is aligned to our DIP and SIP; $18,000 for conference and training for a variety of areas, which include Eye Ready, which is that new standardized testing software that we mentioned, MTSS; universal design training, Title IX training, translation services, PDAC training, suicide prevention training, which is a mandate, and ongoing new teacher orientation. And finally, we have $3,300 for textbooks. As noted earlier, the JBEHS line has funds to support textbook replacements as well. And the final cost center is Central Office, which includes everyone that you see here. The total cost center is, and much more, which is a total of $790,468. It represents 2.9% of the overall Region 9 budget. It's an increase of 4.4% budget-to-budget. And this cost center was actually already approved, so you can check that off your list at the Joint Board meeting on January 28th. And finally, the budget summary. You can see the pie chart, which shows the percentage of each cost center in the Region 9 budget. The largest area is the high school. The second-largest area is per pupil services and followed up by District Wide. And the smaller areas are athletics, central office, curriculum and instruction, and facilities. The increases and what percentage these areas account for, I've already discussed as I went through each cost center before. So therefore, the superintendent's proposed 25-26 education budget is $26,773,118, which represents 5.3% increase in the budget next year in the amount of $1,366,077. And finally, our last section of the budget, Next Steps. In closing, our school budget is higher than we would like next year. This increase is largely driven by nondiscretionary areas like healthcare costs, transportation, and growing needs in the area of special education. However, this budget also represents a critical opportunity to improve our school system. If we make the difficult choice not to support it at this level, particularly in the area of special education, we risk deferring those costs to the future where they will only grow. This budget is more than an investment in education. It is an investment in our town's prosperity. Strong schools attract families, support property values, and develop future citizens who will contribute to our community's growth and success. Together, we can ensure that our schools remain a cornerstone of opportunity and progress for everyone in our town. Finally, I'd like to thank our Central Office team, our school leadership team, and their help in preparing the budget. To our teachers and staff, thank you for your unwavering dedication to our students. Our goal is to fund and support your efforts and to provide the necessary resources to improve student outcomes, which I know you all care deeply about. So that includes our presentation. Sarah has sent to you the budget sheets. And if you recall, the Google Sheet looks like this. You can see the various tabs across the bottom of the budget, which show each cost center. You can go into each cost center and then drill down and look at layers within the layers, if you care to do so. As we get further along in the cost center, in the process, we have, we'll develop a sandbox, and we'll show you what various scenarios look like. And also tonight, and if you're watching at home, please ask us questions. And as we promised before, we'll answer all these questions, share those answers with you. And when we notice four or five questions in a particular area, those questions will actually help us drive some of the conversations and some of our research for follow-up budget workshops. So if we see 10 questions about pay-to-play in athletics, we will know to turn that into a couple of slides at our next budget workshop. So thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Very thorough, very well-thought-out. So would you like to take some general questions right now? I know there's a lot, a lot of numbers came at us pretty quickly to try to digest. But I think at this point, if people have general questions, are you open to those?
Yes, and if you have more specific questions, you could certainly put them in the Google Doc. But we're happy to entertain some questions.
So I'll open it up to the board then for any questions you might have at this point. And then obviously, we'll have time to take away from here, go through the sheets in more detail and come back with questions, or actually add questions as we go along, like we've done in the past, into the spreadsheets and then get back together in the 25th.
I...
Just open it up, so...
Just sort of, sort of general question, looking for the, sort of targeted answer here. But there have been some discussions over the course of the last, I don't know, six months to nine months, about enhancements here in the media center, enhancements to the auditorium for the performing arts. And how do we think about sort of the discussion on those sort of large items? And how do we think about that in relation to the work that, you know, we're doing to get this budget approved?
You know, we presented the operational budget tonight, and, you know, we see all of those items as critically important parts of our capital plan. And I know that we've begun to work on the capital plan and take some suggestions from the last couple of meetings that we've had. Perhaps we could focus more intently on the capital plan in our subcommittees, the Finance and Operation Committee. And, but we're happy to make connections to our operation budget and to the capital plan. There might even be things in our operation budget that we either put in a sandbox or add to the capital plan. For example, the $20,000 on blinds. Now, Mike would like to see that recurring because he would probably like to see that, look at the blinds behind you, over your left and right shoulder. You could see that they're not in good shape. Times that by 130,000 square feet. And so it's something that we need to address systematically. If we weren't going to put $20,000 in our operating budget and you wanted to put $200,000 in the capital budget and do all the blinds at once, that would be a strategy. And that's probably an example of your question, right?
Exactly what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yeah. So, but any of the projects that we've talked about in the past few meetings, none of that has, there are no elements of those included in the operating budget. I think is the bottom line. So speakers or anything like that in the auditorium? That's not in here? Okay. I had a general question back on the allocations. Do you have somewhere what last year's allocation dollar-wise was to Eastern compared to this year? So how much have been increases? I see the percentage, but I didn't have the math for the year-over-year increase.
There's the percent change.
Yeah, I'm looking for the dollar amount.
Or if you have the allocation percentage, like we can do the math real quick.
So those are the percentages from '22. That is last year's. And then the numbers are for this year's. Let me see where I put on that.
52.47.
Yeah, I just want to see, again, like last year, we, it was a million-dollar increase to us. And, you know, this year, it's a million point two or whatever it turns out to be. Or if it's still another, the same, it's netting down. I mean, it's not too big of a percentage increase, right? 52.82 to 52.97, so it shouldn't be that big of a bump?
On the...
I'm just, the optics of having the K-8 budget being high, plus us being high.
Yep.
I added a section on the main page for just specifically for apportionment.
That's it, right, Sarah?
So you could, you can see last year's and this year's underneath the proposed budget window on the budget sheet.
Okay.
On the budget spreadsheet.
That far column there on the right gives that percentage increase.
So you can see both the dollar change and the percentage increase.
But the 52.97 is this year. And what is it for '25, '26?
Yes.
That is that number.
No, that is...
That is, it's the wrong header.
So it is one year in the...
Oh, it's labeled, the label's incorrect, is that?
No. You, you lock it in October 1st of this school year for next year?
Oh, yeah.
That's the-
Student population.
I see, that's not the budget dates, that's the-
Correct, it's the, it's the enrollment date.
I see.
Do you have a suggestion on how to make that even more, is that, is always a question?
Yeah, it's always based on.
Right, because it is not, it's-
So those two highlighted areas. Is the apportionment from October 2024, which uses, which is used to drive next year's change.
I think if you said, for example, to your question, if you said twenty-five, twenty-six budget year apportionment based on October 1st, 24, 25, October 1st, 24 enrollment. That might just remind everybody that it's actually twenty-five, twenty-six budget year based on enrollment as of October 24. We probably ask that question every year.
We do, I do it.
Or you could just say, oh, wow, what a great question, every year, and then.
That's the beauty of the live sheets.
So Easton then is increase of seven sixty? Is that what we're saying over last year then, based on these numbers?
That makes sense, right? Because it was a larger increase, sort of difference from the previous year.
The following year, we think it's going to change a little bit more because the incoming ninth grade class is much more heavily from Reading.
I, I, I really appreciate the strategic priority around curriculum because I, I think that's really important and is, drives, as you mentioned, everything in the school. And so I, I really do appreciate that focus. And I think, as you mentioned, there are some broken links, so it will be great to prepare them. You know, put them in place so we have a strong chain there. I, to our discussion at the tri-board meeting around the title of the new assistant superintendent, it would be great to align that, the pupil personnel services bucket with that title and just call it special education. I think, as we discussed, the pupil personnel services is, is confusing. It's not clear what that is.
Okay.
I think we should just say what it is.
We, we posted that, we took your feedback and we posted that position last week? Last week, and we're calling it the Assistant Superintendent of Special Education and Student Services.
That's great.
So we didn't do it-
Even better, even more clear.
It's just a, it's just a-
The budget category.
Pupil Personnel Services is, I, I was like, what is that?
It's always been, you've always called it pupil personnel services in the budget. And that's why I thought maybe the title could be Assistant Superintendent of Pupil Services. But I think you made a good point. That could sound like it's something different than what we have, and so maybe we change it in the budget.
Change the budget.
I think that's, makes sense, and everything's aligned.
Right.
It's called the same thing everywhere.
Right.
Which is what it is, which is great. I did, I had another question around, because I know Sarah spent so much time over the past few years aligning the buckets. So when you moved special education, transportation to district wide, after taking so much care to put it where you felt it belonged, why, why is that?
We were hoping to see that if we divided that out, we could get some kind of a, a return with excess cost. We were not able to do that. And so it, and so it makes more sense for our large buses to just be in one, in one bucket. If we had been able to, if we had been able to realize any cost differential there, I would have, would have left it separated out. But we've combined them back together again because it's, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't give us anything on the special ed side for reimbursement. We were hoping that would-
So, but what that works out is that- All the transportation then is now back in district wide?
For regular ed students, so, so the large bus that comes by to pick you up every day as a student, we divided those students up into regular ed and special ed and then split that cost out so that we could bill to just those students. But that, that, that large bus that's coming along to pick up all the students in the morning, it is the same bus. We were hoping to see some sort of, we were hoping that we were going to be able to capitalize on, on, on a reimbursement. But the bus still has to come and we were not able to capitalize on any reimbursement. So we didn't want it, we wanted to be sure that we were making transportation clear that the bus still has to come and, and it doesn't, whether or not a percentage of special education students are on it or not, it, it wasn't giving us a good, a good enough return.
So last year, you took on a more complex way of trying to do the accounting on that in hopes that that process would then result in more reimbursement.
Yes.
Turns out that's not available, so revert to the more simple form of accounting.
That's exactly correct. The, the time investment in separating those, it is not worth it.
It would've been nice if it was.
It would've been great.
And then you would've kept doing it.
Yes.
But it wasn't, so you don't.
It's not even close, so it's not worth it.
So technically then is, is the cost for sped even more then, when you figure in all these transportation?
Yeah, I guess that's kind of where I'm going. We've, we've moved some money out, but if there's other bus money sitting-
So just a hundred, it's 149. So if you think of it that way, budget to budget, you would, you would look at your special ed transportation and add 149,000.
But I think what you're asking is, is that 149,000 a result of special education services? The answer is no. So as Sarah was saying, those buses are the same buses. It's the same set of regular school buses. We cherry picked students out, spent the time to calculate a head cost for each child with an IEP so that we could try to reach a higher threshold for our excess cost grant reimbursement. In fact, it does, the math does not come anywhere close, so the time it takes to do that is not worth it. It is not a special education cost. Those buses would be running regardless of the identification of each of those students.
So the cost analysis and to, and of tuition and reimbursement under this, like the therapeutic day students at 69,821, if you divide that out by six, that's 11,600 more or less per student. Is, that is not part of what you're saying, those, that hundred and-
The, I'm sorry, I might be on the, on a different screen. The transportation line, are you looking at the-
I was on the cost analysis of tuition and transportation.
So that is specifically the transportation for students who are attending out-of-district placements. So that is transportation that is in fact a function of that child's special education service and belongs squarely in the special education budget.
So when you go to the, the special education cost center and you scroll down the bottom, you'll actually see transportation. And that's where, that's where that money for those students would be, as an example.
The accounting move back and forth was only for the special education students who are riding the, the other buses.
Yeah, the buses that are circulating anyway. Exactly, the, the big yellow limos, as I like to call them.
Just a, a general question to try to understand. So we were able to reduce staff in special ed and non-certified staff, but those costs are going up overall. So is it, a, a, again, if, if we've got more students coming in, I would think that the staff would be increasing. But is it more people going to outplacements, therefore we don't need the people? So the cost is going up because of the outplacements versus being in the building where we need the staff?
In the Eastern budget, we actually have more headcount, more staff. And so the increase in the Eastern budget was a result of more staff. Actually, there was less outplacements in tuition and, and in transportation in Eastern. In Region 9, it's the opposite. We have less staff, we're spending more in tuition and transportation. And that fluctuates depending on the needs of the students. It could even be different again in Reading as well. But la, overall, tuition and outplacements were much less this year in the Region 9 budget. But this year, it's, it's the opposite.
I thought we had, when we were talking about special ed, you know, for several years now, I thought our goal was to try to have enough staff that we wouldn't need to outplace, uh, place as many students.
This slide describes different outplacement programs. And that is true, that our bridge and basis programs have, over the years, kept some of those students in, which is both, both better for students and also is a, is a kind of an economic savings. These students are students that would not be eligible for even bridges or bases. Catherine, you can say more about that. But these students are specifically more intensive programs.
Sure. So we do have really good programming in district. I think we now have a pretty good continuum of services across all of ER 9. There are always going to be circumstances where students' needs are so intensive that we simply cannot replicate that here. For example, a, a lot of these placements have a really close staff-to-student ratio. So think one staff member for every three or four students in a classroom. That's why the tuition is so expensive. You're, you're paying for the salaries of the people. So now imagine class sizes of three to six students. You've got a minimum of two adults in each of those classrooms. Those, you know, those six students' needs are very similar. The curriculum is highly individualized. And all of the staff in that program are very extensively trained, whether it's applied behavior analysis, you know, clinical mental health levels of training. It could be suicide prevention, trauma-informed practices. All the staff members that that child interfaces with are highly, highly trained to accommodate their needs and help them grow. So that's something that in this building, we simply cannot bring every single staff member in all of Joe Barlow High School up to that level of training economically. And then the other piece is, we don't have the environmental control. The building is the size that it is, the bathrooms are where they are, right? Students have travel opportunities and transition opportunities and exit, exit routes from the buildings and things like that.
Is it fair to say that the, so in Easton, you described, sort of the, Easton were able to serve the needs of the students in school at a greater rate right now? Like you just talked about the budget. Those students will move up through and sort of end up here at Barlow. It's likely that those students will be able to be, sort of have their needs met here.
As of right now, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna, the follow-up to that, just saying, are we over, over-rotated, over-staffed in our bridges program right now because we're putting more people in outplacement? But if we take that number down of people in, in those programs, then in a year or two, or whenever the next wave comes in, we're gonna have to staff it back up.
So we're still staffing our bridge and our equivalent of bases at the, at Barlow right now. It's more of a suite of life skills courses rather than a full-blown basis program because we don't have that cohort of students that needs it. When we need it, then we will flesh that out. But we do have students in district receiving that programming at Barlow, and it's important. And they would otherwise be outplaced. So we are still providing that continuum of services. There are simply students whose needs are well in excess of what we can realistically provide in the building right now. And, you know, I think as Dr. McKinnon was explaining, and I think I may have spoken about this at a, a previous board meeting, we had quite a number of students this year with very significant complicated mental health needs. And we put some very intensive programming in place this year. And the response to that is, they're now moving along the continuum of restrictive environments from home, which you can't get more restrictive than home by yourself. And they're now able to access educational programming, which is some of these mental health settings, for example. So now they have opportunities to learn with others, be in an academic, educational setting, receiving the services. The hope is always, as students continue to respond to these interventions and these services, they can continue to come down in that level of restrictive environment. And we may be able to eventually get them to Barlow to finish their high school career here with us. That's always our goal.
So this chart is projected 25-26, this is not current year?
Correct.
And the, so by line, the average tuition is per student? The average transportation is per student, so it's 144, 144,000 times six?
Correct.
Okay, so on average, those six students are a, a little over $200,000 a student? No, it's, it's divided by six, right? But, but plus the transportation?
Correct. So I, so I categorized the types of placements in these four categories and then did a, an average, a mean, yes, of their tuition and transportation.
Okay. And then what is the, what is the incidence of special ed students at Barlow rate currently? The number? Or the percent, which, I mean, either one?
The prevalence rate.
Yes, I'm just, I'm worried that I'm going to get it confused with Easton and Reading right now. I'm gonna say somewhere in the ballpark of 15 to 16%, but let me check on that. Does that sound right?
Chrissy had mentioned the number 16 recently, so, yeah.
I don't want to, I don't want to tell you the wrong number, because I'm thinking of the wrong, the other district.
That's okay. Is that just IEPs or is that across the board?
That is just special education, so only IEPs. So not including other areas that fall within what was formerly named the Pupil Services Cost Center, which might include 504 students and students simply receiving intervention from other related service providers. But that is just students identified with IEPs for special education.
If you add in the 504s, what's the percentage?
Probably approaching 20, maybe more.
Well, I, I know a few years back, we were 36 when we put those two numbers together. We put both the IEP and the 504s. And I know our number of 504s is larger than now, too. So as a percentage of our population, too, right, because our population's a little bit smaller. So I mean, we, we could check with Kathy, that might be a good question to put in the spreadsheet, because we can actually give you those numbers.
And does the number on the, the 24-25, number of 5.28, 500 million, 5.3 million dollars, does that include the $600,000 that you reported in overages? Or is that the original budgeted number?
I'm sorry, where are you looking?
On the, the, well, the Pupil Personnel Services summary page, the blue one.
The class, okay, yes.
And for 24-25, the 5.28 million dollar number, is that the budgeted number? Or does that include the $600,000 overage that you reported a month or two ago?
That's the budgeted, right, Sarah? That's the approved budget, board-approved budgeted number.
Okay. So it doesn't reflect the overages that are currently in, in place?
Correct, so this is budget to budget, not actuals to budget.
With the overages, it's closer to the budgeted amount for this year?
That's right.
So we're under-budgeted in hindsight?
Yeah.
All right, are there questions?
Happy to keep it-
I have a bunch that I'm submitting to the, to the thing.
Now we can, again, submit stuff after the fact that, that people dig into the spreadsheets a little bit. Looking to keep everybody here all night either, so if there aren't any other general ones or clarifications.
One quick question. Just about under curriculum, with the new additions of classes, would, would you be able to give us an idea of any of the classes that are going to be, being taken out of the curriculum? Like for next year, if there's any that are going to be? So you've got cybersecurity, game design, computer animation?
Okay.
And those are all just brainstorming.
Yes, so what'll happen is, so we were hoping there's a, there's a actual memo that captures what's on these slides comprehensively, that made its way, well, was supposed to make its way to the curriculum committee, but it got canceled and we moved it.
Sorry.
So, but, but we'll talk about it then, but the gist of it for you now is, we're looking in each of these four categories, we're gonna take, we're gonna choose two courses from each category. We need more in the area of technology, but we have ideas. We just haven't populated it yet. And what we're going to do is look at those options for online learning, dual enrollment, and we're gonna see what's out there.
and we're gonna see what's out there, and we're gonna choose the best of the best, we're gonna bring those in, we're gonna look for a combination based on what our student population most desires to do, um, and how they'd like to take their courses. And then regardless of what they take in a dual enrollment or online environment, we're gonna work with at advance to create those, those extension projects that include our vision of the graduate work. So to answer your question, Karen, it's just, it's two of these courses to start for each for the STEM lab.
Just, oh, a, a general question. Under the K through twelve director of curriculum position, one of the last bullets says, provides assured experiences for all students across the three districts. What does that mean?
So that means that, um, the curriculum will be aligned across the two elementary schools, the two middle schools. And because the unit planner actually captures what's going to be taught across a unit, they, through the vetting process and through the writing process, training, writing, vetting, the curriculum director will be on site, um, going through and working with teachers and helping them create that unit planner together, and then vetting to make sure that, um, they're the same in all ways, inclusive of, of formative assessments. And then in implementation, both schools' kids will have access to the same content and the same experience. So when they come to the high school for the first time, um, the high school team will have assurances that what was in the curriculum was taught and everything was covered, and we didn't create gaps because we were using a textbook, for example, or a program, and we didn't make it to the end.
It's both horizontal and vertical integration. And, and I would imagine it also helps to make sure that if you're in one Algebra II course taught by teacher A and another Algebra II course taught by teacher B, that there's some consistency there as well. Or a greater degree of consistency.
No, there will be consistency because they'll talk it out in the writing process.
I would add that, um, in this particular area, think of the, the portrait of a graduate. And, um, the high schools develop a portrait of a graduate that includes critical thinking, reflection, communication, creativity, in, uh, engagement. Right, JT, those kind of domains? And so you could have, um, experiences for students in the area of creativity and what creativity looks like at the high school, um, that can be, that can be built from the elementary and the middle school all the way up. So students could have some project-based learning or some, like the PIP projects in the middle school, which we added. There's greater alignment, right?
Thank you. And then just, you mentioned iReady several times?
Yes.
Can you ta, speak to that?
Yes, sure, sure.
A little bit?
Yeah, so currently we don't have a universal way of screening and assessing our kids that's consistent from kindergarten through the high school. And so what will happen is, three times a year, students will be given a diagnostic screener, which is different than a full assessment. It really tells us how kids are coming along against the standards. And remember, our curriculum is aligned to those standards, so this is gonna give us really good information.
Is it math?
Is it?
Is it math or everything?
Math and, and, uh, English language arts. So we're starting, we, I didn't purchase it in Eastern and Reading for English language arts for K through five because we currently use DIBL's M class, which is a state-approved assessment, um, in literacy, and it functions just like iReady. So I didn't start the IL, the English language arts version until sixth grade. So we're gonna work on the transition together as an ILA team from M class to iReady. And then sixth grade through grade nine, students in, um, ILA will take, will take iReady. And then K through nine, they'll take the math diagnostic for iReady. So what we'll be able to see is how we're performing, how kids are performing on a regular basis, intervene earlier. It has, um, the assessments built in. It groups students who have like-skill deficits for intervention and support. And it tells us, because it's adaptive, if kids are actually exceeding a grade-level standard, um, when they take the assessment. So they might be exceeding in the beginning of the year, but as the curriculum gets more difficult by mid-year, end of year, they might just be on level, right? And then it tells us and projects for us how a student will score on the Smarter Balance assessment. And it also encapsulates, um, encapsulates the, um, interim block assessments from Smarter Balance. So we wouldn't have to give all of these different assessments. It gives, um, exposure to a few examples that kids might see on the test so they could grapple with the vocabulary and the prior knowledge that they may need, and gives teachers important information about that, you know, where they are at that point in time.
So it doesn't replace any of the current standardized assessments that kids in all different grades are given?
Right, so we narrowed down, I did reduce, I took away NWEA, so we will not be purchasing that anymore.
Okay.
Um, and I also took away PSAT in grade, uh, eight because the high school had requested, I wasn't, it was, it's my understanding, the high school requested that it went down to the middle school so that they could have adequate data because we didn't have a consistent process for assessment. Um, so in bringing iReady up and getting everyone trained, the ninth-grade team at the high school, how the high school would use it then, in lieu of the PSAT, is they would, they would give the diagnostic assessment, and then the labs, when they go to writing lab, and they're in the common space, or they're in the math lab, the teachers that are in there could actually pull it up, sort, because they'll have access to it, and pull out some examples for kids to work on and help them work through it. So it just, it gives us more information and it helps us to, as kids are coming through, um, through transitions, develop support. This could potentially help us to develop what I know the board was looking for, which is a ninth-grade academy for kids who might need executive functioning and some other supports coming out of the middle schools. But ultimately, we're not there yet, this would be a step in the right direction and it would give us data to see how many of our freshmen actually would, would benefit from some additional support.
And do parents receive these as results?
Yes, and the, the actual assessment report is really comprehensive. The website, which is called iReady, um, has a lot of really good information if you wanna learn more about it and see what the parent side of things looks like. But we, we have a full plan of execution, the, um, administration have been on calls with me, the special education department, all of the APs, all of our, our instructional teams have gone through the overview, and we're going to be able to pilot, uh, iReady for free. And we've worked out an entire pilot plan, um, over the last few days. And, um, they'll have those licenses over the summer. So some of our middle schools would like to use that in replace of things like iXL, um, for summer work for kids and, and support of their efforts. So we'll have a really good understanding of the tool based on the pilot this year with smaller groups of kids across district, which will help us with, um, when we transition to everyone being trained at the start of next year for testing at the beginning of the year.
And then to this point, you had mentioned identifying gifted students as well. So is that part of this, does iReady contribute to that identification as well?
It does help support it, because we'll be able to see how many kids are exceeding grade-level expectations and standards, and it'll help us to make better decisions for placement earlier on than what we've been able to do with the data we have. The COGAT assessment, which is a separate assessment that Dr. McKinnon mentioned, that's, um, driving up the line a little bit more for assessment, is, we're required by state law to identify talented and gifted students from kindergarten through get grade twelve. Unfortunately, we didn't have the COGAT licenses for every grade level to be able to do that. So we're administering a comprehensive assessment in grade three called the OLSAT. And, um, we're only, we were only doing it in grade three in one district, and the other district was not only doing that in grade three, but has someone servicing tag students. And in addition to that, um, was testing in grade two. And so we came together, we went over the board policy, we reviewed the regulations, and what we determined is, we need to give one assessment in grade three across both districts and streamline that process. We came together, we created all of the letters now, so they're common for identification and for referrals. I worked with, um, Catherine Matz on this because we tag teamed the tag policy. And we, uh, no pun intended. And, um, ultimately, what we've designed is a, is a system of support to capture kids through, um, teacher recommendation, through parent recommendation, where we have internal committees where we review student data from this assessment, from COGAT, and from, you know, for giftedness, artwork, um, musical representation, things like that, so that we have it on record that we were able to identify kids. And we're required to code it for the state system in PSIS. And so, um, we do, we code for Reading, and we code when we identify in Eastern and, and ultimately at the high school. But now we'll have the licenses to actually administer the tests, and we didn't have those before. So that's, that's the long and short of it, sorry Kathy, but that's the, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
That's what it is.
I did double-check my numbers, if you're interested. We are at a fifteen percent identification rate for special education at Barlow, and JT is correct, we're at about twenty-two percent for section five oh four.
Add a tip, or that include, twenty-two percent is AEP plus five oh four?
Totally separate.
Special education in section five oh four, completely separate identification.
Okay, so fifteen percent plus AEP plus twenty-two, five oh four?
Exactly.
Very broad. All right, any other questions from the board? So just to recap the process going forward, everybody should have an email. There is a, the, the, you have the links to the budget worksheet tabs, so you can go and look in detail. There is a Google form, and I, my question I would have, um, I think last year we gave everybody access to the sheet behind it, so we're able to see everybody's responses and not asking the same questions over and over and creating churn for you guys. So I don't know if that's something we can look at again. But you should have a link right now to, I've got it open, you have the link to go to the forum to enter questions. And then, um, I think that's, everything, um, we'll, then we'll reconvene in a, a little over a week after spring break to go into the first budget workshop and go through those questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you all again, a lot of hard work in this, and we're looking forward to diving into it in a little bit more detail in the upcoming budget workshops. So thank you for the presentation and the clarification. If nothing else, then we'll move on to item se, uh, six, uh, public comments. Seeing no public and no comment, moving on to item seven, board member comments. All right, and moving on to item eight, adjournment.
Move to adjourn?